Be a moot point. But if our concern is to try and preserve the farmland in its existing condition, then I guess this is about as far as we're able or willing to go at this point. And rather than say no at all, I'll be willing to vote to have this this much approved.
Bill, this is Chris. I have a comment and a question. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Yep. So I, I too think we, we talked a lot about limiting it on prime lands and so I, I feel like we've had, we've had that discussion and did agree that we want to move forward with looking at places where it could be utility scale solar could be developed. So I'm in favor of moving ahead with preparing some regulations to make this actually come to pass. But my question is mostly for you, Mark. Does it make sense for us? In your opinion, does it make sense and other staff for us to move ahead, you know, with some vigor in that direction now? Or in fact, maybe wait for, you know, the month or two or three until the, the center region planning thought processes move forward and a document is ready?
Well, I'll share my opinion and then certainly Amy and Todd can chime in if they would like. But I think that at this point, given that we're not really under any, you know, time constraint to have to develop any regulations for any particular reason. I don't think that there's any harm in waiting to see what that study might, you know, make recommendations on. You know, certainly I've been fortunate enough since I'm working on this project to, to have learned a lot about it, working with the planning commission. But I think looking at it more holistically from a regional perspective might come up with some different recommendations than maybe I would have come up with just at the township alone.
Yeah, I, I would have to say that I agree with Mark. I think this is, this reminds me a lot of the wireless facility stuff that we've been through. And there's some changes we're even going to have to make to that in the near future. But I think that this is emerging technology. Mark and Todd have done an excellent job of doing research and trying to learn as much as they can. But I think it would make sense if we would wait and see what the center region comes up with because the wireless facilities again is another example I use. We all basically have the same wireless facilities coordinate. I took one that was done in Ferguson Township and the college has the same one in Patton. I think it would probably be a good idea originally. We had a very similar approach on solar stuff as well.
So does that put us in a position of basically only looking at this as a regional issue? Or, or are we still, you know, as a township, able to maintain our own version of it as long as we incorporate the, the, I guess, the boilerplate that goes along with the regional regulation?
Yeah, we can still. Sorry, go ahead, Mark.
You're fine, Amy. You're good. Good.
I was just gonna say, we can still put our bent on it, right? The region isn't going to come down and say, this is what you have to do. They'll come down with model regulations and then we'll be able to pick or choose, which is what we did. Again, wireless facilities, we have historic district, right? So we went and protected our historic district. The other municipalities don't have that issue. So we can still put our own bent on it and make sure that it works for our municipality.
So if we wish to be a little bit more concerned about farmland than other townships, we still have the ability to do that?
Yes.
Okay. So. Okay. Anybody else have anything to say before I ask what, where we go from here?
I would, I would just like to say and remind the group that from the comments that we had during the course of not last month's meeting, but September's meeting, that I, I, I still feel, I, I still feel in my, my vote at this point, we'll see in the future when, you know, the, the cog gets to chime in, but my, my, I would still oppose this use.
Yeah, I'll just comment also, I'm, I'm in favor of proceeding forward with it. You know, with these caveats that we, you know, protect our prime farmlands and farmland of statewide importance. And, you know, and then follow what would come out of the center region planning agency as far as other regulations.
Anybody else?
I think I doesn't, it sounds like it doesn't make sense to proceed any further until we know regionally what's happening. But I think it's been very helpful to sort of learn as much as we can right now. And because I think the maps that have been prepared, the discussions that we've had are really informative for what seems to be coming soon. Is there any reason for us to get ahead? It, it doesn't seem so to me.
I think there's going to be an awful lot of regulatory stuff that we haven't even looked at yet. That if the center region wants to go ahead and, and kind of distill things down, it might be a lot easier for us to look at what they've decided and make our own changes than it would be for us to try and till the ground ourselves at the very beginning. Because I, I think, well, we could be working on this for another year, month after month after month, just to try and make as much progress as we have already done educating ourselves to this point.
Question from, one more question from Mark. So the agency is preparing a set of recommended, what is it exactly that the agency is, is preparing and what is the review process before that's shared either with planning commission people or more broadly to the public?
Sure. So the, the, the exact thing we're putting together is, we're kind of titling it a regulatory toolkit. So it's going to include a lot of information on these uses both locally, statewide, nationally, and then it's going to have some analysis of the region itself, looking at all the different kind of aspects of what makes the region what it is, everything from ag lands to, you know, topography, things of that nature. And then we'll, we'll have recommendations on where these uses may be most appropriate as well as recommendations on how they could be regulated. It also will include some information and analysis on existing regulations in the two municipalities that permit these uses in their rural areas in particular, which is Ferguson Township and Patton Township. And we'll probably do a little bit of three dimensional modeling to show what their current regs would actually allow for. Because we suspect that maybe they may not allow for as much utility scale solar as they think they might, which if that is their goal to provide for, may be important for them to look at modifying their regulations too. So the process is going to be, we will be working on this for the next couple of months. Eventually it will make its way to the CRPC and Transportation Land Use Committee for review. And once they've looked at it and kind of given it the thumbs up, then it would be distributed back to the planning commission, each municipal planning commission. Certainly with me being involved in the project though, I can provide regular updates to the Harris Planning Commission on where we're at and maybe some of the important points of what we're finding in our study.
Okay.
And I'll just say that Supervisor Harden is on the TLU committee and he's brought up to me a couple of times about wanting to get this moving with the utility scale solar. He wants to see it come out of the region. So I think you're at least being very consistent with what one of our elected officials wants to see.
So we just basically table it for the time being until we start seeing some information from the CRPC?
Yeah. So what we'll do is we'll put this on your work plan for 2021 and note that we're waiting for the regional recommendations. And then when they come forward, then we'll move this on up on your list and, and work on it again.
The, the only downside or the only risk here is if somebody comes in and proposes a utility scale solar project and finds a way to make it happen because of current regulations, because we don't have any regulations other than, you know, that might somehow affect the, you know, like something in ag lands, for example. So that, that is a real possibility, is it not?
I think that are both are existing and proposed regulations, they're not, the, the use itself is not permitted in any way. So it would be considered prohibited. I don't think we'd have a situation where anyone could come in and interpret it in such a way that we would be forced to allow.
Okay. Thank, thank you. I had overlooked that part.
Okay. Can we, can we agree that we will wait until we have more information from the center region and, you know, put it on the next year's agenda?
Yep.
See, I have that effect, Amy. I'm sorry.
Wrong guy.
Yes. Okay. So at this point then, are we agreed? We should move on?
Absolutely.
Minimum development densities in the single family residential zone.
So at last month's meeting, I provided a presentation to the planning commission on the land consumption study that the CRPA recently completed. As you'll recall, that report recommends that the municipalities consider implementing minimum development density requirements in residential zoning districts inside of the regional growth boundary. The reason that was provided to the planning commission was it was something that we had been talking about back in the summer in, in terms of possibly amending, making amendments to the single family residential zoning district. During your discussion last month, I think there was a, a lack of consensus on whether or not the township should consider moving forward with these types of regulations. And what I wanted to do was just provide some additional context on this topic. After the meeting last month, I exchanged some emails back and forth with, with Bob Igoe about the, about this issue. And I think, you know, expressing some of these ideas to Bob in writing, I think was valuable. And I had a pretty good dialogue back and forth and I wanted to share a little bit of what he and I had discussed over, over the internet. And hopefully it might provide some additional context for the planning commission to consider. I know back over the summer, you had talked about possibly looking into these types of regulations. So maybe this will give some more information to help you decide whether or not you feel this is worthwhile or not. One of the questions that was asked last month was basically over the last couple of years, the township has done a lot of large scale planning projects. And really what do we have left to develop after that? And, and to that point that we know the Bollesburg Small Area Plan does provide some direction on future growth and development around the village of Bollesburg. And then we did the Designated Rural Areas Project, which was the Large Area Plan. That basically planned for everything outside of the township's non, I'll say non-rural districts, everything that wasn't zoned, everything that was zoned in any way to be for rural development is what that, that project tackled. So it gave us a good basis on which we could complete the recent comprehensive rezoning for our rural areas. So really what is left is the land inside of the regional growth boundary that is planned for residential development. And most of that is zoned R1. There is some property, are some properties that are zoned R2 and R3 as well as RO. But really the majority of our development potential that we have in the township for suburban style development is in the R1 zoning district. And I did share a map and hopefully Chris, you've received those. I hope I didn't break your internet. I sent the two maps for tonight's meeting to you. The second map that was in your agenda did show the locations of vacant, large vacant parcels inside of the regional growth boundary that are zoned R1. And it, it's important to understand that of those 11 parcels, they really represent the township's remaining ability to provide for suburban style housing. Even if we do have development in our rural areas, the overall development density will be much lower because of the fact that we require a lot of open space is part of our conservation design regulations. The homes might be located close together, but the overall development density will be very low. And so in the end, this is really where the majority of suburban style housing can go is inside of our growth boundary. And of those 11 parcels, there's about 139 acres there. And if we were to have those developed where they maximize the existing minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet, they could support up to about 530 single family detached homes. Now that's just based on some basic planning calculations that we did, taking out land for roads and things like that. But at 530 homes at 2.51, which is our average household size, persons per home, that would be about 1,300 additional people that we could support on the vacant land inside of the growth boundary that's zoned R1. As we talked last month, our land consumption in our R1 district has been quite high over time. It's been closer to a half of an acre for each home. So we would be looking at only around 192 dwellings if we were to look at our long-term development trends in the R1 without a remaining acreage. And even if we were to have it developed similarly to what we saw in Kwood North, which is our most recent single family residential development, we'd only be looking to be able to probably provide close to 265 homes. So about half of what we could get if, if we saw more dense development. As I mentioned, that these parcels do represent the remaining capacity in the township to develop at residential suburban densities. And when we look at some of our recent trends in growth in terms of population, we added 739 people to the township between 2010 and 2018, which looking at the numbers of, you know, if, if everything were to, to develop similar to Kwood, we couldn't even support that amount of growth, growth we've had over the last eight years from a population perspective on the remaining R1 land inside of the growth boundary. So I think it's important to consider how we best utilize these remaining parcels to ensure we're at least developing them as efficiently as possible. Another thing I pointed out in here and I didn't elaborate on is that one of the concerns that could, could occur if we were to see a lot of this R1 property get used up is that the township could at some point be vulnerable to what is known as a fair share validity challenge. And what that is, is that a municipality has to provide for its fair share of housing within the, the overall area where it is located. So if a municipality is in the path of growth and there's a developer that wants to grow, but there's no land available to actually put the suburban style housing that's necessary, the township could be challenged and could lose a court case where they would be required to rezone land for suburban densities, which being we don't have anything left that's inside of the growth boundary, we'd have to looking, look at expanding our boundary and potentially pushing out into some of our rural areas to support that growth. I don't know that that's going to happen, but it is something to consider that once we run out of land or are almost out of land, a fair share challenge is a possibility. So I just wanted to share that information with the planning commission to hopefully help continue your discussion on this. I think from a staff perspective, we really feel that looking at, you know, a minimum lot size maybe reducing our minimum lot size a little bit, having a maximum lot size or requiring at least an overall minimum development density would probably be a beneficial thing for the township, just to ensure that the remaining land that we have inside of the growth boundary is used as efficiently as possible. So hopefully that's helpful and in helping you to continue your discussion. If anyone has any questions, again, I'd be happy to try to answer those for you.
But what's our definition of using the land as efficiently as possible? Is that so that it is developed more quickly? Does it mean that it's, you know, I mean, I'm, my, my thought about this is that we wanted to do this in a, you know, intelligent and thoughtful manner as opposed to efficient?
Well, I, I, I think you could use probably a lot of different ways of referring to it. And there's not a, a definition that I can say efficient or thoughtful has to equal this amount. I think that's a philosophical discussion for the planning commission of how do you feel? If you look at this like a bank account, how do you feel this bank account should best be drawn down over time? What do you want to spend it on? Do you want to spend it kind of freely and not worry about it? And when it's gone, you'll find more? Or we're just out of, we're out of land. So, you know, anyone who wants to develop here, sorry, we're, we're, we're full, you know, no vacancy left. Understanding that there's a potential for a challenge there. I think just the overall, it's again, it's a philosophical question. But I, I think probably what we have seen in terms of development may not be that efficient and could have been developed better than it was. And we would have more capacity in our boundary today if we had seen that type of development.
Mark, it might be helpful if you do just a little bit of an explanation as to why the residential can't be treated the way other types of uses are with the regional comprehensive plan.
Well, and that's a, that's a complicated legal question. So I don't know that I'll do it justice. But as far as the MPC, it allows for municipalities to, that plan together with other, other municipalities that share a multi municipal comprehensive plan. The MPC says that when you have a validity challenge for providing for a use, you can then utilize what's allowed in other municipalities. But a fair share challenge from my understanding is not treated the same by the courts because the MPC does not call out providing for your fair share of housing. It simply calls out providing for the types of uses that exist. Cause we really have to provide for everything in some way or another. But there's no, from my reading of the MPC and my understanding of speaking with land use solicitors about this, we wouldn't have the same protections for fair share of housing like we would for providing for quarries, for example, or utility scale solar.
So it's, so it seems to me that we, we have two choices. We can either start deciding where in our rural areas we want to consider future rezonings and, and have conversations with the rest of the center region on where we're going to expand the sewer service area, which everybody knows is a joyful process. Or we can make some plans to more efficiently and more effectively use the remaining 139 acres or so that we have left. So that maybe we can't always avoid a challenge for our fair share, but we can certainly stave that off for a longer period of time than, than if we just do nothing or if we say, we don't really care how it develops at this point. Let's just go with, with whatever works best. I, I think we need to plan for how we're going to do it efficiently. So we don't have those problems in the future.
This is, this is Chris. I think that we should go with the latter scenario, Todd, that to, to see what we can do with these remaining acres in R1. But any changes we make would be to all of R1. So I believe, so that if we were to make some changes to minimum, minimum lot size or, or minimum density, would that, could that potentially open up existing lots with homes to having an additional home put on them, for example?
Yeah, it, it could. And to be honest with you, based on the information that Mark presented in the agenda, plus, you know, all the years we've been doing that, there are probably countless properties already that could be subdivided or not even be subdivided. A second or third home could be provided on the same lot, assuming somebody wanted to go through the land development process. So I, I don't think we'd be creating anything that couldn't already exist. I think we just have the ability at this point to put reasonable restrictions on how it's done. And, and, and I think that's the advantage we would have now rather than, you know, just doing nothing.
Would we anticipate any concerns from current landowners? I'm not coming up with many. I'm just trying to think of, you know, all sides of this issue or at least multiple sides of this issue. You know, why, why are you changing? We can obviously explain why we're making these recommendations. But would you, would you anticipate any pushback from residents to changes in these density or lot size regulations?
Sure. I think anytime we propose to change anything, we get pushed back from at least a small number of people that either don't understand it or just don't want it happening near them. In, in this particular case, I, I don't think it's one, I don't think this is a situation where we're just out of the blue saying, hey, we have a great idea. Let, let's do this. We're recognizing that we're running out of developable R1 land and residential land within the growth boundary period. So we want to make sure that we best plan for that. I, I know that, I, I know that it's, it's really prevalent now to be politically correct in everything we do and say, but this isn't one of those things. I don't think that really can be done in a politically correct way. We don't have much of a choice, but, but to do what we think is right and recommend what we think is right. If it's going to make people mad, it's going to make people mad. The alternative is people in the rural districts are going to be even madder in 10 years or 15 years, whenever we go and start taking farmland that with the previous agenda and we're saying we're trying to protect.
So this is a do the least amount of harm kind of situation and provide us with the longest term solution, really?
Sure. And I think that's what we're here for.
Right. Well, but I mean, in this specific situation, you know, we try and stretch the land that we have as far as we possibly can stretch it before we have to go to that next scenario that everybody realizes is going to be painful for more people.
Sure, sure. And, and I, and I think we, I think we come up among us with the best plan to do that. If the supervisors agree with it, fine. If they don't, they can tell us how to do it better.
There's an assumption here that any of these properties will ever come to sale. And so if they never come to sale, where are you at now?
Well, if they don't come to sale and they don't get developed, at least we still have the capacity. And that would allow us to stave off a challenge because we at least have land zone for the use. And we could provide for some of the development. Obviously if people can't develop it because no one's willing to sell it to them, they may go elsewhere. But I think that eventually, maybe not in the next five years, maybe it is further out. But that is part of the planning commission's role is to look far, farther ahead and try to plan for these things. Eventually things will probably sell and develop over time as they have in the past.
Yeah. And I can say that I've had conversations with several of the property owners that were outlined on the attachment that Mark provided in the agenda. They know they're going to sell or they're going to develop that land at some point. Some of them may not ever sell or some may sell, but it won't be in any of our careers or our lifetimes. But eventually it will happen. And, you know, going back to the earlier part of this conversation, even if these 13 properties don't do anything in the next 10 years, there might be 30 or 40 other ones that maybe want to have the ability, take advantage of some of the things we're talking about that currently they don't because the minimum lot, lot size in R1 is 7,500 square feet.
So is that really the first order of business is to determine a minimum lot size?
It's, it's one of the things we have to do, but I'm not really sure what order you folks will feel comfortable doing it in.
I'm wondering if, could we try to do something like targeting, density targeting, so that we, we come up with a formula that give us a a expected number of houses or units per acre that we could then potentially work off of maybe a systems of incentives or disincentives on for developers so that we try to guide them to and set the, the, the boundaries of the framework for that development. So it's something that's amenable to both parties.
I think that's definitely possible. I will say I've never found in my research of this, I haven't found any examples of a performance zoning style like that. However, nothing wrong with inventing something new. And, you know, everything I have found has been either maximum lot sizes or minimum development densities that are just established. But certainly if there's ideas the planning commission has of trying to incentivize it to even provide for more density, that's, that's certainly something we can always look into.
Yeah. So we kind of did that. I mean, it's cut out of the box for the rural areas, right? And so I was just trying to think out of the box. Maybe it's out of my mind. But think of ways that we can try to get to that point where we're, we're working with develop, working with all the different parties to, to optimize that land or optimize the 139 acres we have.
Yeah. Don't, don't forget too, that several months ago, whenever we started throwing around a little, a few ideas about how we were going to deal with the issues in the residential zoning district, we also have an R2 and R3 zoning district.
Right.
And we did, we did talk about some, you know, abstract ideas of maybe coming up with a hybrid zoning district that might include R1 in it. But R1 could be separate and the R2, R3 zoning districts could be hybridized to, to create a mixed use zoning district that also includes R1 components to it. So, I mean, I think all So, I mean, I think all those things are in play. I think if we, you know, if we're less than 150 acres of developable land in this township, perhaps some kind of hybrid mix there might provide those incentives without having to get extraordinarily creative to get developers to come out and do those things. Certainly, I mean, we haven't done a township wide survey on this in a number of years, but the first 10, 12 years that I was here, we did a couple of different surveys. The number one thing that showed up on all those surveys in my recollection is that people wanted their R1 to stay R1. Maybe that has changed a little bit through the years. I don't know if it has or not, but I don't think we completely want to do away with the R1 situation because there are some people who only want to live there. But if we can come up with some kind of hybrid district for at least a good portion of what we have left, that might be the answer that we're looking for.
So I'm somewhat in favor of what you just described, Todd. I'm not in favor of reducing the minimum lot size for the entire R1 district. I just see that as being problematic for existing neighborhoods. But these properties that are mentioned, and at least there's at least two or three that aren't likely to get developed for a long time. But the vacant ones, I could see us trying to come up with a requirement, a minimum density requirement and using maybe some type of, like you're saying, some type of hybrid incentive where we almost treat it like a rezoning. And we, or maybe we should just go ahead and rezone some of these parcels. If, you know, I can see certainly the ones along the expressway, we could talk about rezoning some of those to get more density as well. But I'm a little fearful of changing the minimum lot size for the entire R1 district. And I'm not real fancy about maximum lot sizes either because I think there are always going to be cases where where a property just isn't from topography or for some other reason can't, you know, can't comply with the maximum requirements. So I would be more inclined to maybe having a subdivision have a minimum density requirement that would apply. And we would try to write it such that it would apply to these vacant lots that you have shown here.
Kent, could you talk a bit about why you're uncomfortable with a minimum lot size for the whole R1 district?
Did you say me?
Yeah.
Oh.
Why are you uncomfortable with a minimum lot size?
Well, I mean.
Of changing it.
I'm just, and I don't know of an example, but you know, if you start coming into it and just, you know, I'll just pick a neighborhood, Kwood or something like that. And you, first of all, I think 7,500 square feet is a pretty small lot. Okay. So, and right now, I think Todd and Mark said, we could probably, if it wasn't for other, maybe covenants or whatever, there's probably a lot of properties that could subdivide right now, not just using the 7,500 square feet. But I just, I just, I'm fearful of coming in in existing neighborhoods and having somebody just starting to break out little lots in existing neighborhoods. I could see that being a problem. So that's my fear. And I can't cite a real example other than just, you know, I guess we could drive around township and look at what's on. But, I mean, obviously, there's certainly some properties that could be subdivided now. And that's fine because they meet zoning requirements. But, but I just hate to, I hate to go smaller than 7,500 square feet. I'd rather try to affect it more from a newer subdivision and having a minimum density requirement.
That's helpful. I just, I wanted to hear more of your thinking there. Thank you.
I agree completely with Kent. And in my view, even a 7,500 number, you know, is not a suburban density. It's maybe close to a suburban density, but we were talking about maintaining suburban densities, you know, at the beginning of Mark's comments. And, you know, you're already getting up to what I consider a village density when you get to 7,500 or certainly when you get to, you know, less than that. And I do like the idea, certainly, you know, for some of these parcels, to consider the mixed use approach as a means of, you know, attacking the density side of it.
And again, I'll just say if it's not R1, if we were to rezone or come up with a hybrid district, then I'm fine being smaller than 7,500 square foot for that example. Like, you know, if we were to take properties 10 or 11 or something like that and create a hybrid district or rezone it to R2 or R3, I think that's something certainly we could talk about to help with our, you know, getting more housing.
I would rather see it go to R2 than lower the 7,500 square foot. I just personally just don't see splitting half acre lots into two quarter acre lots. And I've seen that done. I think we've all seen one case of it on the, coming off 45 behind Hess Field, where a half acre lot was split and they put a house all the way back by the ball field. If you want to see what one will look like. It's not exactly attractive, not great for the neighbors. 7,500 square foot is pretty small to put a house on. So you're talking, I live on a 7,500 square foot lot. There's not much I can do to my house anymore. And so you're talking pretty small houses and monetarily, to build a small house like that, you get a hell of a lot more house than a condo, you know, for the same amount of money. You just will. You'll get a bedroom and a family room extra and a garage and you won't get much, you won't get much on a little 6,000 square foot. You won't get, you won't be able to put the postage stamp. You won't be able to get the house on it. I don't think that's, there's two different things. I think there's R2 and then there's single family dwellings.
Yeah. The more I look at this, the more I'm concerned about smaller lots and traffic access and all the other things that are going to become issues, the more houses you are able to put in them. But, you know, that starts to change the character of the township in ways that we may not be particularly happy with once we have to deal with some of the repercussions. You know, we talked a little bit about when we were doing the small area plan about, you know, perhaps pocket neighborhood stuff in a couple of these areas. It's an interesting idea, but then I start worrying about where we're going to get, how we're going to deal with all the cars. Where we're going to put all the traffic at eight o'clock in the morning and five o'clock in the evening when everybody's going back and forth to work and what it's going to do to the, you know, West Main Street and Shingle Town Road and places where we've already got enough traffic problems to deal with already. So I think maintaining that single family minimum is still a reasonably good idea from a long-term standpoint. But I do really like Kent's suggestion that if we're going to look for some places for more density, there may be a couple of places where we could accommodate in R2. I'm not sure about R3, but I think definitely we could look at some R2.
Yeah. Just looking at the map, it looks like 1, 2, and 3. I don't know if a bowl estate will ever sell. But those in that one, number seven, they have no access to that, right? I mean, you can't even get to, that's a landlocked piece of property, isn't it? Number nine is that Gary McShay's place and he's already got that kind of developed out to the way he wants it. I don't think he's done anything with his place, 11 and 10. Now, 8 is a mystery to me. And number six is Bob Potter's house. And I think we shouldn't let him ever develop that in any form.
Yeah. Number seven actually has access out onto, I think it's Bell Avenue. It's either Bell or Kenport Avenue. That's the old Gates property that sits by the school. And I would anticipate that at some point that will develop in some form or fashion. So, yeah, I don't know that any of these properties that Mark has outlined on his map or landlocked, I think they're all eligible for development.
I want to just mention a few things. Some of the things coming up at the regional level are discussions about what we look like in a post-COVID world. And I think that we're currently making the assumption that we will resume life as we knew it before. And I'm not sure that's true. And these are some of the things we're talking about. And some of the emphasis is on smaller homes, on smaller lots, but also different kinds of homes being designed to accommodate work from home, which also means not cars on the road. That also means our commercial spaces are not being used in the same way. And currently, one of the suggestions, I think, Mark, you presented this, is that trucks, there are more trucks and fewer cars currently on the roads and places like Target and Walmart are flipping their parking lots to accommodate more pickup and pass through and less retail space. And so they're encouraging us to start thinking about what that, what a post-COVID implication would be. And so I would caution us all to make assumptions that everything will stay the same because I'm not sure that's true.
And I think along those lines, I think it's been documented in the media that people are leaving multifamily types of housing for single family. You aren't going to have any affordable houses, at least in Harris Township and probably in the center region on 10,000 and 12,000 square foot lots. So, I mean, how many times in the last 30 years have we had conferences and summits and seminars and gatherings and lunches and dinners to talk about affordable housing? And how much have we actually done about it in the last 30 years? If we're at some point going to do more than pay lip service to that issue, we have to have the means to do that. And by requiring larger lots for even the smallest of houses, that's counterproductive to me. And I'm not saying, I'm not assuming that that's going to happen in Harris Township anyhow. But if Harris Township wants to go on the record one way or the other, saying we want to at least make it a possibility, now would be the time to do it.
That's why I think R2 is good. And for you guys, as far as portable housing, my 2,600 square foot job that I've started, materials have doubled. $61,000 more materials this year than last year for the same structure. Wow is right. So there goes affordable housing completely.
You can even find it from what I'm hearing too, Jeff.
We have to wait and wait. It'll probably take us a year to build the thing that should be done in six months. It's really amazing. Sheet of half inch plywood, it used to be $9 and now it's 19.
And that will revert back to something less than 19 in a couple of years. It may take a little longer, but I just want to make the point that we should at least make the opportunity available if we want it to be available.
I'm hearing, I'm hearing a general agreement that providing opportunities for more dense housing on these available lots is a direction that we want to go in. So I think if we can at least conceptually agree to explore ways to to make that happen, then to me, it's a staff. Could we ask staff to come up with some suggestions and let's do one that does not, for the time being, include the change to minimum lot size, but come up with some suggestions, either this hybridized idea that was floated or, you know, what R2 or others would look like. I guess I'm feeling like we've conceptualized this and we should talk about next steps.
Well, we saw kind of what happened with density with the gates, right? I mean, that place sold out. Poof, it was gone. So obviously there was a demand there for condos. And that gives you your density on a piece of property. That's the marketplace.
Well, it's one, it's one way to do it and it's the marketplace right now. But it's, I don't think it should be condos or nothing.
That's why I'm saying, that's why I was looking for a targeting. And you'd say we want to target on an average 400, was it 400 houses per, not per acre, but.
That'd be a lot.
Yeah. Target someplace with, Mark, your number was between, what, how many total units could we get was 102, 205 to 530 or something like that? So the average total would be about 400 units that we would look to try and accommodate in that area. And so we would try whether that be a combination of zoning, mixed zoning, whether it be a combination of incentives, but say, all right, our target here is X, whatever it is to try and optimize, not necessarily minimize or maximize, but to optimize the density. So that we can accommodate, well, there might be a few more large houses or houses that want some acreage. Okay. So maybe the trade off is that in order to accommodate those 10 acres or something, whatever it is, you have to put X number of houses on there if you're going to use one acre lots. And you have to come up with X number of multi-units in order to accommodate, to help hit that target. So it's, I think that we've got to come up with something like that to help us optimize because I don't think there's one black or white solution to it.
I gotta say, Bob, I'm getting the conservation design goosebumps.
It's a tightening in my stomach.
Yeah. You want to avoid that at all costs.
Yeah. So basically, we just look at what we have left and say, okay, this goes here and this goes here. And this is like puzzle pieces at a certain density per piece. Is that it?
I think if I was under. Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah. I don't know that tonight's the night to do that, but I think that it would be something along those lines that we take a look at what's the best way to do it. Maybe it's, maybe what we have is actually a working session that to, you know, put everything else off the table and say, all right, this is exactly what we're going to look at for the next hour and a half. Kind of draw out the parameters of it that we can all agree to and then sit down and say, hey, look what we did.
I think that's a good idea.
What I was going to say, what I was going to suggest too, as part of that is I can certainly put together just, if you require this many dwelling units to the acre, this is how much that 139 units would be able to support. And that way you can kind of see, you know, you could pick your target that way by having some numbers. And we can also do some research into the other things you talked about, like the hybrid R1 type zoning as well as maybe performance measures as well.
So on that, I was going to ask on this hybrid zoning, is that, would that be kind of like a PRD where you give some flexibility for development? Or when you say hybrid, what do you mean by that? You're giving them some more density than you would normally allow in the rest of the R1 district?
Yeah. I think what Mark and I have talked about in the past, and I think, I think we may have talked about the planning commission a little bit in the last number of years is if you do away with the strict R2, R3 designations and make that zoning district sort of the hybrid district, I think you can probably make up your own rules. You can, you can allow R1, R2, R3 uses as you wish. And you can decide how you want them integrated. One of the things that we found, if you remember, whenever we did Rocky Ridge was that I think the developer wanted this. And I know some of the planning committees. and I know some of the planning commission members said this, and it didn't, it didn't exactly meet with, uh, a lot of acceptance from the few people that, that, uh, came to the meetings and, and commented on it. The, the idea was to not have the multifamily units or the, you know, the, the, the lower, the, the lower-cost units separated from the rest of the development. They were to be integrated into what was occurring. And that, that's my idea of what the hybrid zoning district would do. If you drive down the street, you wouldn't necessarily be able to tell that that one was a hundred-and-thirty thousand, that was two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. That's a duplex, that's a triplex, that's a sixplex, that's, that's a single family. That's more along the lines of what I was thinking. There are probably some very simple ways to accomplish that. Uh, I'm hoping that we, that, that we don't try and overthink this and, and, and try and reinvent the wheel because there have to be simpler ways to do that, and just working through the, the rural stuff that Mark and I have been doing the last couple of weeks, I think we can figure out some simple ways to, to, to do some of those things. So if that's the direction we end up going, I, I think we'll be able to come up with something, and if we can't, then we'll, then we'll come back to you guys and say, help us out.
I'm all in favor of that.
Yep, I think it's a good idea.
Not reinventing the wheel is, uh, a lot easier, I think.
I think you got a lot of head nodding, Todd.
If, and anything we can do to avoid a court challenge down the road, it would be, you know, advisable as well, right? Not in, not reinventing the wheel keeps it a little closer to accepted practices, right?
Sure, and, and as long as the head nodding was agreement and not narcolepsy, I think we're, I think we're headed down the, down the right path.
So far.
So is that, is that something that we think we would have as a working session next month? Uh, I mean, I know we haven't built the agenda yet, or is that, is that a January, February thing?
It's probably a February thing because January, you need to worry about your work plan that you present to the supervisors. And we're hoping that next month, unless you have a plan, uh, we'll probably cancel your December meeting and give you the month off.
From your lips to God.
Wait, wait for the head nodding.
Okay. So, uh, are we at a point where we can say we have discussed this enough tonight?
Yes.
So, uh, can we then move on for the quote-unquote agenda for December?
So, as I said, if you don't have any plans that need action, we will likely cancel your meeting.
Hey, she said it twice, everybody.
Exactly.
We have seven plans right now, so.
Yeah, if that makes you sad, you need to reevaluate your life priorities, and I could help.
Make sure that goes in the minutes. So, uh, do we have any reports?
Uh, I would say there are going to be, uh, two months of reports done sometime soon. Please don't anybody, uh, run into the office in the next week or two anxious to sign them because I might not actually get to them in that amount of time, but, uh, after the first of the year, if you guys want to go on a signing binge, feel free.
Can, can we, if you get something that we can all do our diligence in December and save Debbie the problems of having a stack of stuff sitting around, uh, send out an email maybe? And in lieu of a meeting, we'll all just meet at the township office, whatever the time, and sign papers?
And Deb will hunt you down. She is good at hunting people down to sign things. Ask the supervisors. Crack that whip.
So Amy, uh, do you have anything from the CRPC?
Yes, we, um, we received several reports. Some of that information I've shared, which is that um, there is discussion already on what implications are for the current pandemic. And, uh, the, the traffic patterns are changing, uh, transportation in general is changing, housing is changing, and also what are permissible, permissible options. So restaurants do, continuing to do outdoor seating through the winter. You know, the, the idea of trying to help businesses survive is an important component, but also that this is sort of reshaping the way that business is being done. Um, and so these are things that we'll want to sort of keep our eye out for and pay attention to and how we can support our communities as it's being reshaped. Some of it will be short-term, other will be m- long-term. It's hard to know right now how this will all shake out, but I think it's important to keep talking about it and keep observing patterns as we can. Um, one of the key things is there seems to be a lot of migration out of cities. And, um, the belief is that the workforce will continue to do work from home more readily and more easily than ever before. And that means that, uh, currently the housing market is very fast. And, uh, State College, uh, that is included. Uh, also more expensive, as Jeff alluded to, that's just, everything is more expensive right now. And, um, that means that business and, uh, things that we thought were usual, patterns of behavior may be changing. Um, so that's part of what we talked about. We also got an update that, uh, the North Atherton section um, is complete, and so we look forward to the next, uh, component, which will begin in twenty-twenty-one, which is not that far away. So enjoy it while you, while you have it clear. And I believe that, uh, the Potter's Mill project actually did the ribbon cutting. So if you haven't been through there, take a look. It is a remarkable change. I also have a note here that we are officially rated as a drought status. However, our water table is good.
Well, oh, we're in drought status, did you say?
Yes.
I thought you said drug. It's like, oh, that's interesting.
I haven't seen any regulations or change of behaviors. I think this is not usually the water, uh, lawn watering season, so, but the, our water table is still pretty healthy.
Here at least.
Amy, did you guys talk at all, did you guys talk about, how's Catta doing?
Um, Catta's not doing well at all.
I wouldn't think so.
Yeah. They, um, they're coming to the supervisors in December to talk about a change to the local match shares. They met with the municipal managers about a week or two ago to talk about that. They, had they not received CARES money, um, Luwana, the executive director, told us that they would have actually closed at the end of the year. They are suffering big time because of their not having a fair box. And then they staffed, they laid off twenty-five percent of their staff. Um, they don't have people riding the bus because classes are, what, eighty percent online, so students don't have to go anywhere, and they were worried because of social distancing, they couldn't fit as many students on the buses, so they had kind of top-loaded buses so that they could be able to deal with the ban. They didn't know what it was going to be like. Um, so they're, they're in some financial straits right now. More so than a lot of other transit systems in the state because of being a college town and because the micro-transit that they're doing in Bellefonte is going well, but it's a pilot program and they haven't ironed out how they're paying for it yet. So they have some significant challenges. They're going to all the municipalities, um, in December to talk about how they want to do their local match share for next year and possibly twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you.
Anything else, Amy?
That's it.
George, what do you got?
Well, we're, we're having our first, um, MPO meeting, uh, tomorrow, the first since the beginning of September, actually. Uh, there haven't been any, any, hasn't been anything to report in the last couple of months as it relates to the MPO meetings, but from the agenda, there'll be some discussion regarding the virtual meeting that the State College Area Connector, uh, people put out. Some, so that we're do a report on the participation levels and some of the output uh, of, from back and forth as it related to people's follow-up. There's also a section in the agenda, which I'm curious to nail down a little bit, uh, where they're, where they're talking about the impact of the COVID, money crunch, the funding shortfalls that they're worried about for the tip and, um, just, and for the operating expense budgets as well. In fact, there's a, there's a, there's a general funding shortfall section that seems to me, it's, I, I, I wasn't able to glean much out of it from reading the agenda. I think it's written in Swahili or something. Uh, but I'm hoping that in the course of the, uh, the meeting, I can glean more information just about how bad they're getting a sense of things being. And what Amy just said about Cat, Cat raised my eyebrows a little bit because I'm, I'm wondering how, how deep those, those conversations might go into some of the other areas, i.e. highway funding and that kind of thing. And then on, on the following night, on Wednesday, I have a watershed meeting. There have been a, a couple of those since our last get-together, and the watershed is, uh, having its issues. They're having, that group is having its issues, so. I know it's not something I normally report on, but, um, it's, it's a, a, uh,
Existential kinds of issues, George?
Uh, operational, operational decision-making issues, I'll say. And, and getting this one water thing off the ground. You know, a, a portion of it certainly is, 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 uh, attributable to, you know, funding questions that are raised by COVID and, you know, shortfalls and how difficult it is to approach the municipalities with respect to, you know, trying to get some support. But it, they also have leadership issues within, within the group.
Okay, so stay tuned.
So, so definitely stay tuned. We'll, we'll see, we'll see where the next two meetings go.
Okay. Anything else, or can we move on to the recent actions by the Board of Supervisors?
Okay, they approved the ordinance three forty-five, the Historic Resources Overlay District. And they also heard the same update that you heard on the rural rezoning, uh, project. And our planning and zoning gurus, Todd and Mark, have started, I believe that's what they've been doing back in his office, started working on the language that I'm going to then need to take and translate into ordinances.
Is there anything? So I guess I will entertain a motion to adjourn and will
Bill?
Whether we're, yeah.
And before we adjourn, I was, thank you. I, I certainly appreciate your leadership for these last couple of years. I think you've done a fine job, and I certainly appreciate all your, your hard work and the time you put into this, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It, it has been, it has been a very interesting twenty-four months, let me say. I look forward to becoming a civilian on the board again. You're not throwing me off completely, right? Anything else for the good of the order?
I moved to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all very much. We're adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.
Amy, I have a question for you.
Sure.
I saw a heart check working out at the Discovery Drive intersection today. Is that-
Yeah.
That signal going to be coming up soon?
Um, yeah, they told me that, that signal should be done. Um, if it all works out, okay, that signal should be done on, uh, the-